Call the meeting to order, this is the December twentieth, two thousand eighteen, meeting of the Town of Sherburne Select Board. I would ask the Town Administrator David Williams to read the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First we'll amend or approve the agenda and then have a period of public comment. I'm not aware of any changes to the agenda and also, nobody signed up for public comment. In consideration of consent agenda with the payroll warrant and next meetings of January tenth, two thousand nineteen, and January twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen. Consideration of financial operational matters, library update from Sharon Pearson, finance director to an accountant. The Dover Sherburne Middle School Environmental Action Group, Nick Cooby's discussion regarding a ban on the use of plastic bags. Recycling Committee and Sean Kaline were invited. Consideration of the following licenses and permits. ABCC license, stable licenses, common visual license, class-two licenses. And consideration of appointment to the Housing Partnership Committee, Ms. Brad Piercy, for a term to expire June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Then, general plan, housing section portion of the planning board. And a discussion of forty-one North Main Street regarding a possible warrant article for the annual town meeting, that's with Andrew Consigli and Gary Lebarski. And consideration of police detail policy. And then routine business town administrative report and selectmen reports. And adjourn.
Terrific. I would move to amend the agenda, that slip items three and two. Mike Chiamo is running a little bit late. Paul Drensis will not be able to be here tonight, so I know that Mike is going to be very interested in item two, so I would move that we reorder the agenda.
Also, I forgot to read the meeting minutes of November first, two thousand eighteen, and November fifteenth, two thousand eighteen, under the consent agenda.
Under the consent agenda, great. Any discussion? I would most like to accept the agenda as a matter of second. All favor? Terrific. Do we have any public comment? I didn't see... There's a sign out. Anybody have a public comment? Okay, why don't we move on then to the consent agenda?
I think that we accept the first two items, payroll warrant and the meeting minutes, and talk about the meeting dates separately.
Second motion? All in favor of the approval of the payroll warrant, the meeting minutes for November first and November fifteenth? And apparently there's a conflict with the Dover Select Board is meeting on the same January tenth and January twenty-fourth, which affects the broadcasting. I'm moving it to January seventeenth and January thirty-first works for me. Does that work with us?
I think so. I just want to point out, and I think, you know, that we should really try to stick so everybody knows, we don't change our meeting dates, we have a meeting every two weeks. It's, I think we need to have that for the public one and anything, to know that our meetings are every two weeks, nobody's scheduling any meetings last minute or anything like that.
Yeah, I agree with that. There's some consistency. If we need to add a meeting, we can, but it does alternate weeks, so that everyone...
That's why we have a five-member board. If one person can't be here, we still have...
Right.
I'm fine with the seventeen and thirty-first.
Terrific.
I'll move to approve that our next meeting will be the seventeen and thirty-first.
I'll second that motion. All in favor? Terrific. Okay, the next item on the agenda is item three, which we're taking out of order. The Dover Sherburne Middle School Environmental Action Group wants to discuss a proposal to ban the use of plastic bags. Is, who's going to be presenting this? Is it Nick? Terrific. We've got two seats over there, you might drag a couple chairs over. Gentlemen, if you could please identify yourself and where you live, that would be helpful.
Not using this mic at anyone. You want to grab this microphone?
I think they have, they have one.
They have one.
A little close, ain't you? Or reading for that to queue up, want you to identify yourselves, please?
So, I'm Nico Band from Dover.
I'm Christian DeSalle from Sherburne.
I'm Matthew Dan from Sherburne.
I'm Nick Cooby from Dover.
Terrific, welcome gentlemen, and we've had the benefit of your PowerPoint presentation to the folks watching the broadcast and hear Hammond, so walk us through it, please. With the consent agenda, we have a conflict with the Dover Select Board meeting, so we'd move these to the seventeen and the first. And we're going to try and stay with it. Try very hard to keep the, every other week. And now, we've taken it out of order, two and three, we're doing two. We have one, hitting a second one there, people four. While you're doing that, Sharon, do you want to give us all the date on the library project? So we'll go back to the original order while the technical difficulties get resolved.
Okay. I threw the handout, please. And at the last closing meeting, Mike asked me if I could work with the OPM and compare their forecast to our spending. So the first page, if you go all the way over to the, sorry, if you look at that first page, you'll see that per design techniques, this is change order fourteen, this was just approved by the Library Trustee. And so, right now, the prediction is that the project is at nine million, nine eighty two six forty-seven. That's all the change orders that have been approved to date. Spending to date is six million, eleven, one hundred and eleven thousand, and, you know, currently we've got a positive variance of two point eight million. So, if you, you go to the next, any questions on that page? It just shows that our high-level tracking is done there, categories. We do have an area where we're over infrastructure and meaning.
What is the forecast based on? Is that basically the OPM just kind of predicting what we're going to see for change orders and so on?
Yeah, they're still, at this point, they're still waiting for information from Five Star, so, you know, it's just, it's a waiting game. But this is, these are the numbers that I have, that are written and approved by the board, and that's what I'm presenting today.
I don't understand what the variance has changed.
Oh, that just means that we've, to date, we've spent six million and eleven, this is just what we've spent compared to what the proposed forecast is.
Oh, so it's not really a variance from the...
Not really, no.
It's really...
Yeah, this is...
It's cost left to be spent.
Yes, exactly. The next page is just an overview of our receipts that we've received to date. Three point, three point eight million dollars in gifts, two point nine million dollars in grants received to date. We borrowed a million, and we have free cash of one hundred ninety thousand and a receivable from the grant that won't be received until a year after the project's completed. So, that brings us to total receipts that will be available, eight point seven million. We spent six hundred and, six million eleven, one hundred and eleven thousand, so currently we have a remaining balance of two point six million dollars.
Sharon, did the receipts include the additional two hundred and eighty-three or two hundred and eighty-four thousand that the trustees had approved at a meeting, I think it was late November, early December?
No, I didn't, okay, so that's a, two hundred, I'll reach out.
You said the two eighty-three or two eighty-four, I just don't...
Okay, okay.
It was one of those numbers, I just can't remember which it was.
All right, I'll reach out and I'll update this, this and that. So it's just, I mean, a gift from the library?
Yeah. My understanding is it's going to be transferred from the endowment fund.
Okay, oh, that's great, okay, so I'll definitely update that.
So that's going to be getting a total up close to nine million, once that's received.
Okay, all right. And the next page, this is just a cash flow, and it's showing what we spent to date, again, there's that six million dollars. And then what I did is I incorporated the balance that we have not spent yet, based on their forecast. So if we spend the three point eight million plus the six million, that puts us at nine million eight, nine, almost ten million dollars. And the proceeds that we have are only eight point seven, but if you add the, another two, so it looks, that puts us at a deficit of about a million down the road. So that would even...
So how certain are we on this nine point, nine eight two?
That is the latest change order that I have.
So what, what other change orders are out there?
I don't know.
What's the number on those? What's our, what's our range, you don't know? It fits in with the total, but she says this is all the change order she knows about, and you're saying there's other ones that are being negotiated that she doesn't have yet, that haven't been approved, so that's not consistent.
Well, I thought Sharon used to say another two point two million, that is based on ECO and...
Uh...
Has she incorporated that?
No.
The number that was discussed at the library form is like a ten point eight million, about a number, somewhere around there, I think. Is this nine point nine? Well, that's what I'm wondering, this is, it looks like it's a million dollars off based on what we talked about last week.
Exactly. I think maybe, maybe what you're saying is those, are those change orders not approved, so they're not issued yet, is that...
Yeah, so that's...
I don't think you can...
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out from what Mark was saying, is how, how much are they...
Sharon, I thought Sharon gave a projection based on... It doesn't sound like it.
So, has John updated his, his projection? Yeah, I mean, this is the latest one I have from him, so...
Yeah, it's just, it's not that helpful if we don't know what the other numbers are, but thank you, it's good information to have, but just not, before the next meeting, maybe we can face with them and see...
Absolutely.
So the numbers kind of match up with what we were talking about? Well, I think we want to know what the exposure is to the town, and so this tells us what the exposure is based on what's been approved, but that's the big question, is what's hasn't been approved, what's under negotiation, and what the range of possibilities is there.
Okay. Yep. All right, so I'll update after the next meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions up here?
There we go.
Good timing, looks like the technical issues have been resolved.
We are four eighth-grade students from Dover Sherburne Middle School, and we are trying to ban plastic bags in Sherburne because they are terrible for the environment. So, plastic bags aren't supposed to be recycled, so like, the really only thing you can do with them is throw them in the trash, so like, so even like, if you buy it, like, they're, they should be banned because if you throw them in the trash, you're just going to put them dump, and they're going to sit there for like five hundred years until they like break down and decompose, and, but, like, you can't really recycle them and turn them into, like, you know, those like renewable, like, cup, renewable cups that are like made of recycled plastic, or, yeah, and, uh, plastic, there's bags that they take old recycled bottles and stuff, and they make it into like these bags that you can use for groceries, but plastic bags, you really can't do that. And, uh, this is a video, uh... Should I just play from my computer?
Bags are made of recyclable materials, but recycling companies don't want them in your blue bin. Seems strange, right? It's due in part to single-stream recycling, which is common in many communities. It works like this. You top everything into one bin, and it all gets sorted at the recycling center. Special gears separate flat items like paper and cardboard from bottles and other containers. Air jets split lightweight bottles and cans away from glass. Electrically charged aluminum cans are repelled into their own stream, while magnets pull out tin cans and other metals. And after a beam of infrared light detects up to seven types of plastic, a blast of air sends them along individual paths. The end result is huge bales of sorted materials, which are sold to paper mills, metal foundries, and plastic makers. So, what's the problem with plastic bags? The first complication occurs at step one, the single-stream recycling bin. Here, bags get wet and dirty and become too contaminated to sell. Second, there's no mechanical process for separating plastic bags at recycling facilities. And the recycling industry representative said there's not enough staff or money to clean and dry the dirty bags. Instead, they either get tangled up in sorting equipment, or accidentally end up in veils of separated paper. And if just one half a percent of a veil is contaminated by other materials, it can't be sold to reuse companies. In the end, most plastic bags are removed by cans and dropped in the trash, even if recyclables are inside. So, what can you do? Clean and dry plastic bags are still recyclable, but they must be dropped off at specially-designated collection spots, like the ones you see at grocery stores. From there, companies buy the bags and recycle them into hard, durable plastics, like patio furniture. If you must choose between a home recycling bin or the trash, the recycling industry suggests throwing plastic bags in the trash. It might feel wrong, but recycling centers say it helps more materials get recycled. Another option, don't use plastic bags. Opt for paper or cloth bags instead.
Um, white plastic bags are bad for the environment, so, like, one reason is that they pollute our water and our land. A lot of people, like, if they, if they bring groceries home or something, it might blow out, or, uh, there's really, like, light, so they get picked up by the wind, so if your window's open in your car, they're very likely to, if there's nothing heavy in them, to fly out and land, uh, wood, anywhere where your car is near. And, uh, they're made from non-renewable resources, like oil, and that can be used for, like, for other purposes, because, like, you can't, you can't re, you can't, like, get more or make more, it's, there's only a certain amount. And another reason is because, uh, they, they take about, to make plastic bags...
...a big amount of energy as driving your car a half mile, so...
Um, that just, just shows that, like, they're kind of wasteful, and you, uh, so you, yeah. And, uh, also, one, another big reason, and a lot of turtles are dying every year because they mistake them for jellyfish, as you can see in this, in this picture. If you were a turtle, you wouldn't see the difference between the, you wouldn't see the difference between the jellyfish on the left and the plastic bag on the right. And turtles have these spikes, the special spikes, well, the ones who, who eat jellyfish, I think are loggerheads, and a few others, they have spikes in their throat to keep the jellyfish down, these are really slippery, and if they didn't have these, they would just, like, come right up. But, but with the plastic bags, instead of them just going down like the jellyfish does, or it just slides down their throat, it gets caught on these spikes and causes them to choke to death, or just like get really injured from having plastic in their throat for a really long time. So, um, in the Pacific, there's a big area of land that is, or not land, but plastic, that's called the Great Pacific Garbage Patch, and it covers one point six million square kilometers, which is roughly the size of Texas, and it's estimated to be around one point eight trillion pieces of trash. And mostly the trash, you can't see, it's, uh, yeah, mostly plastic, you can't see, it's microplastic, so when you look at it, it's hard to see, but if you were to take a fine net and sweep it through the water, you'd find a bunch of these little plastic beads, basically. What happens when an animal eats plastic? Turtles and other sea creatures eat the bags because they mistake it for things that they eat. Some animals cannot digest the plastic, which leads to them dying. Some animals choke on plastic, which also causes them to die. And, um, it's found in fish that we eat. So, a lot of people say rather than banning plastic bags, is these biodegradable ones, and that's also for balloons. There was this thing at, at my school a few years ago, where they, uh, they were doing a balloon launch, and, um, they were for veterans, and they would like, or, they would tie notes to them and just let them go, and then people would find them and like, see these notes, or, and then they would like give them to other people, and, uh, some, something like that. And, but what they didn't know, and what was really bad about this, is my school was right next to the ocean, and just like plastic bags, turtles mistake balloons, and they, so then they decided to use biodegradable plastic bags, which are almost as bad, or just as bad as, uh, as regular, like, plastics. So, biodegradable stuff basically breaks down into smaller pieces, but doesn't fully, like, turn into, back into oil or whatever it started as. It, um, it turns into these little pieces, and it, it takes the same amount of time to break down into its original state, but, but, um, it just stays as these, so, when the regular plastic bags are breaking down at like a constant rate, this just breaks down really fast and then stays small for a really long time. So it basically takes about the same five hundred years to fully break down. Paper bags cost much more than plastic bags, but we can, we can solve this problem by selling the paper bags for a few cents. And these paper bags don't hurt the environment because they're made on these tree farms, where for every tree, tree they cut down, they grow another one, so we're not losing trees from them. And reusable, and reusable bags are the best because they don't hurt the environment at all, and they could be sold at, at stores or as fundraisers. Um, so, me and Nick called four different stores in Sherburne, and we asked if they used plastic bags, and three of the four said yes, so this would be a big change for Sherburne. And there are nineteen stores in Sherburne. So, um, around eighty towns in Massachusetts have banned plastic bags, and some examples of these are, uh, some towns are Plymouth, Duxbury, Cohasset, Marshfield, Boston, and Framingham. And actually, Boston just banned their plastic bags around a week ago or two. And, um, China has banned their plastic bags, and many cities in California have banned their plastic bags. So, why plastic bags are good to ban? Um, it's just, like, it's good for the town, just for progressiveness and thinking and care for the environment.
Paper ba- paper bags cost much more than plastic bags, but we can, we can solve this problem by selling the paper bags for a few cents. And these paper bags don't hurt the environment because they're made on these tree farms where for every tree, tree they cut down, they grow another one, so we're not losing trees from them. And reusable pla- and reusable bags are the best because they don't hurt the environment at all and they could be sold at, at stores or as fundraisers. Um, so me and Nick called four different stores in Sherburne and we asked if they'd use plastic bags and three of the four said yes, so this would be a big change for Sherburne. And there are nineteen stores in Sherburne.
So, um, around eighty towns in Massachusetts have, um, banned plastic bags and some examples of these are, uh, some towns are Plymouth, Duxbury, Co-Hasset, Marshfield, Bo- uh, Boston and Framingham. And actually, Boston just banned their plastic bags around a week ago or two. And, um, China has banned their plastic bags and many cities in California have banned their plastic bags. So, why plastic bags are, uh, good to ban? Um, it should, like, it's good for the town, just for progressiveness and thinking and care for the environment. And it's also a good example for other towns because Sherburne is like, uh, uh, it's a pretty good town and other, other towns might look up to us. And if they see us banning plastic bags, they might think about it, uh, too. And, and just like these other towns might help us ban plastic bags, like the other eighty or so towns in Mass. Uh, uh, we might help, we might help continue this, uh, throughout, through other towns and maybe get the whole state of Mass to ban them. Uh, and, uh, this, this is just a picture of a plastic bag caught in a tree, probably, like, blew out of someone's car. And, uh, this, this link, uh, shows, uh, that other people are, uh, picking to ban. Like they're, uh, our environment and our co- and our econo- economy and, uh, like, and a bunch of, uh, Massachusetts cities and towns have banned these already. That's, that's it.
Perfect, thank you. This is a very informative presentation. Um, quick question, when you spoke to the businesses in town about plastic bags, did you ask them, um, whether they were receptive to the idea of substituting, of not using plastic bags and substituting paper bags?
Um, no, but a lot of them, like, the one, so these, the three towns that, the, um, the, the four town, the four stores that we called, so Sherburne Wine and Spirits was the one that said they're totally, like, didn't use them. But I think Dunkin' Donuts uses both. So, like, a lot of times if you go to Dunkin' Donuts, you get a paper bag. But I think if you order, like, or get, like, big, like, big things, they might put the paper bags inside the, the plastic bags.
Yeah, my assumption is that Dunkin' Donuts and Walgreens are used to dealing with, they're working. Even business in towns that have banned plastic bags, I suspect that I'm like a lot of people where I have the reusable bags in my car and don't routinely, it's hard to break old habits, but routinely get them out.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know about the her- heritage, uh, Sherburne Wine and Spirits, I don't think does.
Yeah, they definitely don't.
They have paper bags and boxes, so, um, the heritage, I think they have, uh, I want to say paper there. Yeah, the wine shop. Yeah.
Um, it was a very good presentation and, uh, I don't know, did it last sixty minutes on Sunday?
We actually recorded it because my daughter just did a presentation about plastics.
Yeah, and it was interesting. It had the whole thing. It talked about, um, the Pacific and it showed it had a wildlife island and, um, which is, you know, no people, just wildlife. And it has these birds that have died and as they decompose, all the plastic that was left in the belly from, uh, uh, that killed them, essentially, you know? So it's definitely an issue. My only, um, I think my only question is, some of the communities like Framingham and Newton that have banned plastic bags, somehow the stores can get out thicker grade plastic bags. I know they're meant to be reused, but I'd like to not see that happen, you know what I mean? Because I think a lot of those thicker gauge plastic bags still get thrown out, you know, and still go through, um, the same issue. Maybe they're easy to recycle, I don't know, but I'd like to, you know, go, like, all nonplastic in some fashion. And I don't think that'd be a huge impact to the, you know, handful of, on retail.
Yeah, the, um, Sherburne, uh, in the springtime, there's a roadside cleanup and I've done it several times for about two thirds of Maple Street. And it's remarkable how much of the plastic bags, McDonald's, Burger King, Dunkin' Donuts, you know, the, 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 the fast food stuff. Um, just as a point of information for the don- the Sherburne trash stream, if, if white bags do get into the trash, they go to a trashed energy facility out in Millbury, so they get burnt and generate electricity. Still not the most efficient, uh, process. I don't know, do they still would do the same? Do they, I would assume they also use Millbury, but I don't know that for a fact.
I don't know that for a fact.
Yeah. Any questions from the audience?
Well, I just, I'm like Charlie Tyler, I'm the, uh, the, uh, the co-chair of the Sherburne Recycling Board and, uh, nice presentation, thank you guys for that. Uh, we do affect from plastic bags in the trash in, uh, at the Sherburne transfer station. One of the questions that comes up when people come in is what do we do with these? And we tell them they have to put them in the trash. Uh, but when they throw them in our trash receptacles, they sometimes get blown up. That, that picture of the one, the, the plastic bag in the tree, very reminiscent of something that you sometimes see around the transfer station, you can, like, put half of the plastic bags, they get thrown in the trash, the wind blows them off, and then they end up blowing across, and that's where they're involved, of course. We may, we guess, so, um, we, we do not do single stream recycling in, uh, in Sherburne itself. We, we don't have to worry about that part of it, but we still have to worry about people throwing a plastic bag in with their paper and things like that. Most of the, uh, the bans that you find, uh, happening around, uh, for single E plastic bags. That's why you see those, you know, multi-use plastic bags, still being used there and, and, and things like that. Um, I would also suggest, uh, you folks, uh, the air quotes, add some, uh, some draft, uh, plastic bag laws. Anything you could suggest? You might, might want to draft something like that, uh, to follow up on this, uh, to, to, to distract the noise. And, uh, and the Sherburne Recycling, uh, and, uh, we, we actually, uh, we've given the recycling committee about this and we'd like to support it and expect it to be, so, um, I have some, uh, uh, information that I've taken from the internet. We may have seen it already, but I can always, uh, uh, send links like that to you. And you could, if it will get further, maybe call for the draft law, if you could consider as well. Thank you, very nice, uh, presentation, well, good job.
Thank you.
The next, that essentially be drafting an article for town meeting?
Yeah, I, it's unclear, um, materials we got, it's unclear from town council whether or not we need to do it. I, to me, this seems like a tricky topic for a town meeting or, I don't know. Who enforces these? Uh, who enforces these? How are you enforced? What's the penalty?
I have to see a sample bylaw, there has to be a penalty to it.
Well, probably, probably just a yearly town penalty, but who enforces it? Who, who, um, you guys know who enforces these?
No.
You build an inspector and police, you know, you got a lot of, uh, it's, uh, Mary Ann.
I mean, uh, other than just public, yeah.
Well, is this something, Robert Johnson, who's got a two western habit, is this something that the selectmen can make a decision on? Or is this something that would have to go before the town?
We've not, um, we don't have an answer yet from town council on that. It may make sense to have it as a town meeting warrant because it, in fact, obviously, it's on the businesses in town, but it impacts everybody as well. I suspect it would pass overwhelmingly, but that's just one person's opinion.
The one I'm aware of in Framingham, it was a town meeting passed by law.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know how you do it other than a bylaw unless you ban plastic bags at the recycling center. I mean, the, the only way to do it without going through a town meeting vote is whoever's authorized to decide what goes to the, uh, the transfer station. I don't know who that is. I don't know if that's also the board of health or...
You can decide what goes through there.
You do?
Yep.
All right, so you could do it that way, too.
Or you do it in a license, a Victor license.
Well, we're restricted there, too, you're not allowed to put it on brush over road either.
One of the mechanisms would be that.
Well, that's the only way to do it is in our consent.
The only way I can think of doing is modify their licenses, like a Victor's license, uh, liquor license, whatever it is, meatet license. You put it in there, I think a bylaw is cleaner.
Yeah, I think you have, you have the authority to do it that way. Yeah, a bigger bylaw is much clearer. Let's, um, if we can get copies of the other bylaws that have been passed. Uh, you said a premium, was it, um, you go?
Yep, tell them to, yes, I'm, uh...
I have, actually, I have a, a, uh, suggestive plastic bag investment law from the, uh, um, Bureau. They, they've been helping people, like, uh, right here, I can pass that on.
Ashland just banned, um, last year or so ago.
I think, I think the other thing somebody could do, maybe it's your class or somebody, you know, you can approach these businesses and just say, will you voluntarily stop using plastic bags? You think it's in the interest of the town to do it? And, um, see if you can get something done without even taking it to town meeting. Still take it to town meeting, but not, it doesn't hurt to just ask these businesses to stop if you think it's something they should be stopping. Um, and they've seen it in a lot of other places, like Chuck said, anybody who's got multiple locations is already dealing with this somewhere.
Yeah, I'd be surprised if there was resistance at Dunkin' Donuts or Walgreens about this or, or the wine stores. I, I just don't know about right now, I don't think they use that many plastic bags. Like there was one other hand in the back.
Nope. You can also do a letter from this, like, man.
Yeah. That's a, in the interest of cleaner roads, that's the direction I'm asking you to direct it. Well, also, those of us that are picking a trash load side, too, it's, um...
Yeah, there you go.
There you go. Yeah, actually, I like that, that's an even cleaner, is just asking them to voluntarily do it. It's, it's a very nice presentation, it's where everyone's going. It would be interesting to have a town with a limited number of businesses just to voluntarily agree to do it. Perfect, thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is consideration of licenses and permits. Gene, you want to walk us through, um, organize these very nicely for the liquor licenses, stable licenses, common victualer, and the class two licenses? Last year, we had some of the, um, stables had not completed their inspections. It looks like from the memos that you've attached, um, that all of the inspections for all four classes have been done, is that correct?
Yes. We started them in early October this year. And, um, like I said in the memo, they went out on October twelfth and thirteenth. They did their inspections, they did find some issues, but they've all been re-inspected and Chris Canning felt, um, that they're all set to be issued.
Perfect, thanks to Chris. I, uh, I asked Gene before the meeting, uh, I, the liability insurance for the liquor licenses, the liquor coverage ranges from a million per occurrence, two million in the aggregate, to one million per occurrence to four million in the aggregate. My question for Gene, what's the minimum?
A million.
And it's a million, so they all meet that threshold. Any questions up here about any of these licenses?
I just would like to know what it is that Chris says is still outstanding on the... He said you can issue a permit, but they...
No, they, they, they have certain issues that were outstanding.
But they cleared all their issues.
They cleared them all.
That's a first.
Yeah.
Those two on Chris, this is...
Yeah, I think that's...
Every year I've done this, there's always been some that are outstanding. So, we've, uh, approved them under the duly, or do we have to, can we do a motion to approve them all as presented?
You can do them by type. You can do them all, but probably better to do it type, this type of like...
Make a motion to approve the ADCC license for Sherburne Wine and Spirits provisions, Heritage of Sherburne and Sherburne Fuel. Second motion, discussion? Question in the audience?
Sherburne Wine and Spirits provision.
Heritage of Sherburne and Sherburne Fuel. Discussion up here, all in favor? And I would move approval of the, um, licenses for the stables at Green Hill Farm, at Two Ames Drive. Um, the address is cut off here, is it ten Bullard Street?
It's, um, it's seventy Bullard and twelve Ames Drive.
I'm sorry, twelve Ames Drive, seventy Bullard, nine Brush Hill?
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine, yeah. The copy here got cut off. What's the address on Mason Hill?
It's on Mason Hill Lane.
Uh, one, one, three Western?
One thirteen Western.
Two Washington Street?
Forty-two.
Forty-two. Okay, the others I can do, one eleven Coeur d'Alene Street, twelve North Main, thirty-four Great Rock, one eighty-eight Maple Street, twenty-six Bullard and sixty Washington Street. So a total of two, four, six, eight, ten, twelve, thirteen in all. Is there a second? Discussion up here, in the audience, all in favor? Perfect. I'll move to approve the common victual, victu- victual license license for rustic pizza, Dunkin' Donuts, C and O Frosty and provisions. Second motion, discussion up here, audience, all in favor? So, this is the, 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 the bear sounds?
Yeah, do you want? Uh, do you want to list them or do you just look at them?
I think we're here, email.
Do you, do you, do you, do you get class two auto licenses for Sherburne Auto Brokers, Ron DeVincent, Sherburne Auto Sales, Jason DeVincent, Rose's Automotive, Ed Rose?
Second motion, discussion up here? Uh, second motion. Any discussion in the audience, all in favor? Gene, thank you and thank the audience.
Hey, you're great job, Gene, this is great, I thank you.
Yes, and John Doe's name?
Ed, you're too late, we just renewed your license, you're gonna have to do it again another year.
The next item on the agenda is the consideration of the appointment of Brett Piercy to the Housing Partnership for a three-year term that expires on June fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Her, um, membership is recommended by the Housing Partnership Committee. Is Brett here tonight? I know she's been at least the last meeting, maybe the one before. Um, I would move to appoint Brett Piercy to the Housing Partnership Committee for a three-year term that expires June fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, is there a second?
A second.
All in favor? Thank you, uh, uh, Brett's got a wonderful, uh, background. I think she has the same, that's just me, the, the, my, uh, from M I team. And, uh, tremendous experience, so thank you for volunteering and, uh, agreeing to serve on the, uh, Housing Partnership Committee. Okay, the next item on the agenda is with Mary Ann Newt for the Planning Board. Is looking for input on the housing selection of the general plan. Mary Ann, do you want to walk us through this?
I believe you were done with copies of the section a few days ago. Um, in, in the interim, uh, we have found a couple of, of small errors that have been corrected, so you may or may not see those. Um, and you may or may not have had time to read it with, with care, uh, but we hope you had a chance to glance through it because, uh, we consider it to be near completion. It's been reviewed many times by the Planning Board and other interested parties and was recently re- uh, reviewed and approved by the Housing Partnership Committee. Uh, a lot of it, uh, is thanks to the Housing Partnership Committee, uh, comes from the Housing Production Plan that was approved in two thousand seventeen. Uh, but there are parts of this that are, that are quite different from the Housing Production Plan. So, uh, we're, we're looking for, for your, uh, approval of this very important part of the general plan. I should probably remind you, uh, again, that, uh, the general plan will be available in digital form. It will be readily, easily revised as time goes on. So, uh, although this, we hope is a near final document, will be sent to the editor for formatting. Um, it's not cast in stone forever. We will be reviewing it yearly and certainly every five years will consider serious revisions. So...
We have a PDF copy with the color. I was very interested in the, uh, the, the map listing of the towns that have certified approved or expired housing production plans. But it was used in black and white and shades of gray, um, a lot of red.
Yeah, let me pull out mine and I can give you an idea of how many of them actually have been approved and certified. and certified. Eddie, may, you may have that number on the top of your head. Um, it, it, all the dark spots are either approved or expired. Um, I don't know if you can see the difference between red and green, but, um, there are...
There's a fair amount of red on it.
There's a lo, there's a fair amount of red, and there, there, there's quite a few green approved. That's where we are right now. But there are very few that have been certified. That is, that are able to control forty B development because of their progress toward, uh, the ten percent goal. I would say there's one, two, three, four, five, six, maybe seven or eight towns that have a certified plan at this point.
Yeah, I got eleven total on the, this...
That sounds about right.
What's interesting is Lincoln is not one of them. Lincoln's is expired.
Yeah.
I guess they don't need it because they're, they're, their SHI is well above ten percent.
I guess that's true, yeah. There are probably other towns for which that is true that don't show up on this map.
Yeah, I didn't realize that the actual plan had been certified, which is terrific.
See, Mary Ann, there's, there's probably a lot of people who haven't really been following this. Can you just, in a nutshell, give us the three or four high points, the goals, or whatever?
Sure, yes. Uh, the housing section of the general plan is divided into three major sections. The first is focused on affordable housing, that is, by state standards. What are we going to do to try to reach or move toward ten percent, and once we get there, to stay there? Um, this section, I should say, for, once this is published, people will find it quite interesting to read because it gives a lot of background on the population of the town and where we stand in terms of other towns in the region. Um, so, for recommendations toward affordable housing, uh, first, agree upon a shared vision of how we're going to approve, uh, uh, move toward the affordable housing goal, and basically, some of that has already been done in the Housing Production Plan process. And then, um, manage what's already happening, happening in terms of affordable housing, um, and try to control affordable housing in town in the, in terms of where and how quickly it's built and what kind of housing as best we can by reaching Safe Harbor, uh, that is, making enough progress toward, uh, housing goals. And then, to maintain that situation. I'm sure every town would like to do this, but I think we've laid out a plan that, uh, will help us get there. The second goal is focused on housing diversity, and that means not just affordable housing, but housing of different size and price so that, uh, uh, young people, young families, elderly people can afford to stay in town or to get a, get started in town. And there's very little housing diversity in Sherwin, as you know. So, it covers age-restricted housing, housing that's needed for the workforce in town, and people who can't afford a huge house on a big, uh, lot. So, that covers things like accessory apartments, mixed-use development, and more modest housing models. The third goal is kind of, um, to assure everyone that we're not trying to change the character of the town. It's ensure that all new housing is consistent with preservation of the town's scenic rural character and natural resources, as well as regional and global environmental sustainability. And in this section, we talk about how we, with, uh, new housing development, we might be able to steer it toward, uh, uh, styles and sizes that are more in keeping with our environmental goals. And also, we, uh, acknowledge that, uh, global warming will have an effect on housing costs and, uh, will affect everyone, including housing, and, uh, we need to take a very long view. So, that's...
Great, thank you.
The background data is really interesting. The, uh, the demographics, uh, the report includes Sherwin and its seven budding towns, and we are the lowest density, um, by a significant amount. It was the only one town that comes anywhere close, and also have the smallest number of senior family parcels by far. So, the impact on the tax rate is pretty linear when you look at the, you look at these numbers. But as usual, uh, this is just, I, I read it quickly, and it's just, it's terrific. It's a wonderful overview. Um, do we have a chance to read it one more time? What's your timing, Mary Ann? Do you need...
Well, uh, yesterday. No, I'm just kidding. Actually, um, the, the editor who's doing the final layout for us, actually, this is my layout, but it's as close as I can get to the editor to save us editing money. Um, he will do the final layout, and he can't start on it until after the New Year. So, uh, and I should say, we have a couple of sections, one in particular that's still in process. Um, so, I think if, uh, say, if you have time between Chris and New Year's, it would be great to have this, you know, like, soon after the New Year, let's say, if you find all that.
Mary Ann, I, I have a couple of little typo things that I'll, I can email you.
Thank you, yeah.
One thing that I did see, there's some references to the Board of Selectmen. Just make sure that's changed because we have the select board.
Yes, thanks. Okay, great.
Did we get this posted there that on the website?
Yeah, we called it first thing this draft.
I haven't been posting drafts on the website, but we can at this point, uh, as PDFs.
This must be your final. I mean, it's, it looks very, very...
Yeah, I think we'll remember to replace it when the final comes up.
That's right. I mean, we could save that for all of the sections that are done, and actually, I thought you might like to see an overview of where we're at, the whole thing. So, I made a little summary. You know, outlining the whole thing. And some of the sections that haven't gone to the expert, like housing, are very well checked and done. I would say there's only one section that's not good.
I think you've seen everything that's got, that's sent to editor.
If I can, uh, keep the mic for another minute, um, I wanted to say that the open space, the open space and recreation plan, for both of you at home, um, is finished, and it's been approved by the state, and it's, uh, ready to go for printing. Uh, right now, we're just working out how many copies we need and how many copies we can afford. The Planning Board has a budget of two thousand dollars for the printing of both of these plans. And, um, we have, we, we'll be spending the entire eight thousand on the edit, editing and layout, uh, which is a bargain because it's both plans. It's like four thousand a plan. So, we have two thousand left for printing. We have a really reasonable, um, estimate from a printing company up in Lowell that if we order a hundred copies of the, of this, and that's kind of the minimum that we need, it's only eleven dollars a copy. Fifty copies would be about eighteen dollars a copy. Our local town printer that you usually use charges forty-five dollars a copy. So, anyway, we can get them for eleven dollars a copy. So, it's something to think about, uh, moving forward with this plan and, and the general plan. Um, I think we should have copies available, even though it's available online. Uh, it can easily get lost in the website.
You sent me the name of this printer in Lowell, who's...
I have it.
Yes, graphics, yeah. And, yeah.
That's quite a differential.
Yeah, it's huge. So, if you want to...
I did have two questions when the, um, when the plan submitted. Um, number one, is there any consideration made by the Planning Board, um, to, uh, put in a requirement so any development, even an EA development, has to at least have ten percent affordable? Kind of to keep the numerator catching up the denominator and that there? It's tough when you go backwards. And I know, especially if something's designated elderly or, um, I think the states are a little inconsistent that they sometimes will not allow it to be both age-restricted and affordable and account on the numerator. At least that's a recent, uh, opinion that Framingham got, and they had to move some things around. But any, I don't know, the opinion has a, every, uh, any involvement over ten units has to at least have ten percent affordable.
There are towns that have such an inclusionary zoning bylaw. And yes, I think we should have such a, a bylaw. In fact, I think we proposed it in here. But to the extent that it's legal, that would be a good thing to do.
Yeah, and like I said, I mean, other communities do do it, so I don't have to think. If it's been challenged, it's been challenged by now. Yeah, I forgot my other question. Oh, I know my other question. So, Safe Harbor, now we're in that now because we have, we have the, um, the approved plan. How long do we have to basically meet that goal of the ten percent? Because if Safe Harbor, one of the reasons is also because of, uh, Cooley Street is being delayed, it looks like, and I'm sure that's scheduled. If that continues to get delayed, even if, even if we've approved it, and, you know, I guess, how long does that keep our standing? You know, how long can they delay it before we become...
We're, we're not actually in Safe Harbor yet. I should ask Gaddy to come up and help me with this because she knows this backwards and forwards. We're not actually in Safe Harbor until we've met a yearly production goal of, I think, uh, point five percent.
It's difficult because we're approving it, and then it's up to the developer now, and it's out of our hands, and we could be in non-compliance.
It's a fluid, yes, it's a problem because, yeah, it's out of our hands. Yeah, we need that. We need to get into Safe Harbor. Uh, yes, so, Safe Harbor, um, we are not in Safe Harbor currently. Uh, even with last year's EA zoning, we did not achieve Safe Harbor as of the vote because of the proposal that the town voted on was essentially, one was, that, that, one part of the town voted on the EA section, and that had a ten percent, essentially a ten percent inclusionary zoning affordable segment to it. Um, but it would not, in, in and of itself, would not have gotten us to Safe Harbor. And at this point, it has not gone for, forward. Um, we're still, it has, nothing has, there's no momentum on that. The other segment that was essentially, the two projects were tied because of the understanding that there would be a, um, shared waste treatment system and shared water supply system. That was a forty B that had been filed. Um, there were different, lots of information on both sides, and it's our understanding that, um, a letter of, um, site approval was never issued, and who's, it, it basically, it's, again, it's in the hands of the developer. Um, and so, there is no momentum on that, uh, apartment. So, yeah, we are, this is the biggest challenge that the, um, Housing Partnership has faced, and just in general, our town has faced, I mean, outside of Sherwin having money to build its own housing, which everyone will look back at history of a number of capital projects and say, this is, that's not the way that we necessarily want to go. We will be pulled into developers and the projects that we can achieve working with developers, so.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Eddie, and thanks, Mary Ann.
George, do you want to, the next item on the agenda is a possible warrant article for forty-one North Main Street. Do you want to...
Um, the owners of forty-one North Main Street, Terry LeBartier and Lisa Potts, and developer Andrew Consiglio, who he's been working with, approached me, approached the board. We discussed it a couple of weeks ago, that they have a proposal that they wanted us, they want to make a presentation on regarding a tip, which is a tax increment financing to pay for, um, a downtown water and sewer where they would pay for it upfront and to pay it back rather than taxing any of the citizens. It would be an incremental payment over a certain amount of time to, um, in lieu of taxes, they pay back the town. Instead of them paying taxes, it's paid back that way. So, we're not paying for a big infrastructure project upfront. Um, I think they'll give more details. Are they out in the hallway today?
Yeah.
You want to invite them in? Um, so, I invited them to the meeting tonight so they could present what their idea is on this, and we could hear, hear what they have to say, and consider what would be an article on the Springtown meeting if it's, um, if it's something that makes sense. Yeah, no, I just, just so you guys know, I just interviewed, kind of, that you guys came to us with this idea about a tip, and that you guys could provide some more information about what your idea is and what you'd be looking for, for approval from the town at our Springtown meeting. Because we got to consider what we'd go on and warrant as an article.
You must be willing to just put it into a pause mode. Well, that's what, I want to let them present because I don't know. Oh, do you want to explain that? Timeline of the warrant article. Um, our last meeting, um, we're putting the warrant on January ninth, and it could be placeholders, you know, with the concept, but that's...
All right, well, we, um, we, uh, I think people can propose warrant or contest, and then we vote, um, whether to include that on the warrant. Um, I think those proposals come in between now and January ninth, correct? Is it? Right, and you can, um, they can vote it as a placeholder. It may not be a final warrant article as of January ninth, but we could have a place for it, which then, we can then vote whether to include it or not. But by January ninth, we should have a general idea of what, where or won't be included on the warrant.
And, and we can vote for something on a warrant and not support it.
Right, exactly. Just because it's on the warrant doesn't necessarily mean...
It's not a vote of support. It's a vote of giving the public a chance to have a hearing on it.
Yeah, that's an important...
We'd see the official response. It wouldn't be a citizen's petition. It'd be self-responsable.
It would be put on the agenda by virtue of the selectmen, but if we...
Or, or by the Planning Board.
If we go not to endorse it, then we wouldn't have a local citizen...
And our inclination is to put it on, to let citizens, I mean, if we open it on, it kills them. Uh, we have had warrants that were, um, almost impossible to vote on because the language was so vague. That's very much the exception. Um, if the timing is such, the, so the first... at our Springtown meeting. Because we've got to consider what we'd go on and warrant as an article. came to us with this idea about a TIP, and that you guys could provide some more information about what your idea is, and what you'd be looking for, for approval from the town at our Springtown meeting. Because we've got to consider what we'd go on and warrant as an article.
Well, we, um, we, uh, I think people can propose warrant or contest, and then we vote, um, whether to include that on the warrant. Um, I think those proposals come in between now and January ninth, correct?
Right, and you can, um, they can vote it as a placeholder.
Right.
Well, it may not be a final warrant article as of January ninth, but we could have a place for it, which then, we can then vote whether to include it or not. But by January ninth, we should have a general idea of what, whether or won't be included on the warrant.
And, and we can vote for something on a warrant and not support it.
Right, exactly. Just because it's on the warrant doesn't necessarily mean-
It's not a vote of support, it's a vote of giving the public a chance to have a hearing on it.
Yeah, that's an important-
We'd see the official response, it wouldn't be a citizen's petition.
It would be put on the agenda by virtue of the selectmen, but if we-
Or, or by the planning board.
If we go not to endorse it, then we wouldn't have a local citizen-
And our inclination is to put it on, to let citizens, I mean, if we open it on, it kills it. Uh, we have had warrants that were, um, almost impossible to vote on, because the language was so vague. That's very much the exception. Um, if, the timing is such, the, so the first governance task force had a placeholder for the warrant article, because they didn't have final recommendations. They did, in the placeholder, identify the topics with the final language, um, to be completed before, well before town meeting. Rick, we need to figure out how to leave this on, or maybe to load these up beforehand, so we're to, but we'll talk after the meeting.
I can, I can tell you something. I, I go to a lot of hearings where you have to at least a day or two ahead of time, send a PDF to the person who's running the hearing, and load it on the computer ahead of time. We've got somebody like, you know, Diane or David, who coordinates that, and they show up with one computer, you set it up, Rick, and we just go. We don't have to do this every single time, it's frustrating to, to do this. You know, it's not a blame thing, it's just a-
Yeah.
Somebody's stealing connections now?
I guess they didn't know about the monitoring cameras that we have in here.
Hello, my name is David Consiglio, um, from Chicago Development, uh, consultant for Gary LeBarcy, um, and he owns forty-one North Main Street. Um, so, the last time we were at the, um, the public hearing, or public presentation, uh, for the forty-one North Main Street, we made a presentation, um, killed the latest plans, uh, and ideas that we had. A lot of the questions that came up were, particularly about the financial end, and what the town would be paying for the infrastructure, there was a housing, which is a sewage treatment plant, and also a, uh, probably water supply, for the town's head. And so, we went back, uh, to the drawing board, and, uh, you know, started running some numbers and figuring out exactly what it would cost, and how we could arrange a, um, a scenario where the town, uh, doesn't pay anything out of pocket, essentially. And, um, so, the, the way that we're proposing to do this now is to, uh, through the TIP. And the TIP, which is, uh, for people that don't know, is, um, tax incremental financing. And the, the concept would be, we have the assisted living facility, um, on forty-one North Main Street, uh, a part of the six acre development, and that would, uh, essentially, um, assess out at a certain value. And a typical value for a building like that would be, say, sixteen million dollars, comparing to other towns. And, um, the tax revenue would be somewhere in the vicinity of, say, three million dollars, uh, a year for a facility like that, if you do the math, from the sixteen million. And, um, so, what we would essentially do is, um, it would be a ten year, uh, plan, um, and it would be, it would essentially be a scale, scale burden, so it wouldn't be a full percentage each year of that tax revenue. Um, it would start, I would say, low and then go high, uh, over ten years. And, um, this would help pay for essentially the sewage treatment plant and the, uh, the water supply, which we would essentially build, um, as the developer, and then we would hand it over to the town at completion. And, um, we would take out a loan for the, for the sewage treatment plant, nobody paying the water. Um, we've been talking to, uh, some leaders in town, um, that would, uh, be able to potentially, uh, reduce the cost by using some kind of resources, uh, machines, um, you know, for the bidding of the piping. So, I think just coming back with this proposal, we can kind of get into the finer detail, you know, of exactly how this is structured. Uh, the, the concept would be to, um, paper this through the, uh, building of the assisted living, and then through the tax incremental financing. Um, so, that's what, you know, that, that's, sort of, also what we'd like to do is, um, put it to a Springtown meeting vote. Um, so, we started to draft a warrant article, um, which our lawyer, Pam Brown, can explain more in detail. Um, you know, and I need to make sure I'm not forgetting anything in terms of conceptual, uh, either. So, um, once the system is turned over to the town, um, essentially, the, anyone that wants to tap into the system would pay accordingly to what their use is. Um, and that would be the same with us as, as someone that is tapping into the system. Um, the, and that's, that's pretty much the concept right that we have. We also have an updated plan. Uh, we rearranged a few of the, um, the buildings, um, and made the market and the house, uh, more, uh, one element, and created a public space, um, for the town essentially, uh, public square. And we feel this is a, uh, a great asset, in addition to, uh, the potential for the sewage treatment plant and the wastewater. Um, so, I think I'll leave it at that, I'll get into more detailed questions or-
Can we have Pam present, uh, talk about what exactly the warrant article would be that we'd be considering, just so we have an idea?
Before you get to that, uh, you mentioned that the, uh, earlier in the eleven year period, it would be of ranging, of go from low to high, are you talking about the exemption percentage?
Yes, exactly.
So, it would max, the exemption would be higher in year eleven than it would be in year one?
Yes.
Okay.
Any, any, yeah, sorry, I said, any, yes.
Oh, you've got an eleven year charge in here?
Yes.
First year is just construction. I think it's still like, if I clarify, you said the exemption would, it tapers down. So, the exemption is, uh, like, if you're a hundred percent, they pay existing taxes, so you're never losing money. So, whatever the tax, whatever tax that property pays now, it'll pay basically like year one to, that's during construction. Then, what they pay in tax, not even where exemption, will taper up to full value after ten years. You know what I mean? So, exemption-
And they have a reverse of what the exemption is.
So, each year, the town gets more revenue as it comes in.
The first year, we get essentially no revenue from the assisted living, and each year we'll start getting more as the loan is paid down. No new revenue, you know, because you always start existing, and the town's never going to get less money than it was getting there before. Right. So, so, at the, at the end, and I, I don't know if you've run the numbers on these yet or not, but what percentage of the projected costs will you have paid for by virtue of the tax exemption offset? In, in other words, does it, does your tax exemption total the full amount of the cost for this project at the end of time?
Yes.
So, at that point, you will have put, I mean, you would have taken the risk, but you won't have any dollars in the game at that point. The town will have purchased the entire system, and you'll just be a user.
Yes.
Okay. So, you're not, you're not really investing in the system in that sense?
And I will say that there's definitely a lot of details to be worked out, and I think what we're seeing here is just, you know, in concept, and I think it's fair that, you know, we, um, hammer up some detail probably over the next month. Um, because I know, what, what you said, one of the issues I have, is that I actually think the town should not take ownership of it until new flows go into it. I'm talking just the wastewater system. So, once established a district, do what you do, do the betterments, and then flows go into it. If it's just the developer or the, the property discharging into it, I do believe that that entity should actually operate it until town flows. And that's one detail which-
And, and, and another sort of policy level question, which is, um, we'll need a, we'll need a contract for this, this tax increment financing. Would you be open to a term that made all or some portion of the, um, of the tax reduction contingent on having a commercial component in that development?
Trying to follow.
Well, in other, in other words, you've got, you've got an assisted living component, and then you've got this town square concept, and you've got retail-
Yes.
-that you're talking about doing. Um, a lot of the planning value to the town is the retail. If the retail doesn't show up, and the retail's also the piece that's not the tax exempt piece, right, that the assisted living is. So, the retail doesn't show up, we get less out of this, so you should get less of a tax exemption out of it.
I think that's fair, and I would, I would say it's, it's particularly towards the market, because I think the market is the retail component. Um, there's a lot of sort of ancillary retail that possibly could happen, but we just don't know.
Yeah, I just, I just don't want to see it, it, it's just a living-
Exactly.
-that we finance the, the construction of, and, and we've got a, a sewer system that only serves old development, not new development and the assisted living, so.
This I've seen actually are contingent upon a conceptual, they actually have a conceptual design and a reference package in the background materials, and that's, um, it's, it's definitely a two wastery, there's no question, you can put something like that in it.
Is it typical for a TIP to have a minimum, um, there are provenance in here of, uh, constructing up to X units of, um, assisted living, uh, units. Is it typical to have a minimum that's required before the exemption even takes in? In other words, that the-
I have to see other examples of them. I know what you mean, or-
Minimum, minimum review, it's a minimum retail component.
But that's why I was just asking, yeah.
Yeah, and I'm, I've asked him the same question about the assisted living units.
And why do we care how many, how many units, uh, why do we have, we have to get up to a certain value, right?
Right.
Oh, you should, it's the va, it's the value of the, right. So, it's not, it's not the number of units, it's the overall value.
Right, it's the tax for it.
And that's why the exemption is the exemption's percentage. Because even though the estimate's sixteen million, the valuation, you really don't know, you know what I mean?
Could be higher, could be-
Yeah, exactly. So, it's always a percentage. So, you can only estimate the actual revenue. But if it's less units, and it's appraised at less, and if their exemption is, let's say, twenty percent, it's twenty percent what they're praising. You know what I mean?
Yeah, so we would get a formal appraisal.
Well, that should be whatever the assessor says, you know what I mean? So, the assessor determines, that's the, uh-
One other thing I'd like to have you just get into a little bit, is what you're proposing for a wastewater treatment facility and water. Like, I know, when we initially talked about this, um, I think a concern of a lot of residents is, it's not going to be a system that everybody in downtown immediately has to hook up to, that it's a scalable system. So, if you could talk about that?
Yeah, that's the cost, the minimal cost down of construction and also the, um, facility itself. Uh, we would sort of do the minimum, uh, that you would need to put the system in, and then, uh, it would be expandable over time. So, for example, sewage treatment plant, um, the school would need it at some point, um, and it, you know, required it to be expanded, it could. Um, it's, it's still in the same location as the ball fields, um, you know, on town land. You know, and there's, there's a lot of room there to expand. Uh, we also are at, um, the soils there, and they're not really positive, um, for the system, so, um-
And, and one thing to point out, that's what we need to point out to you today, those fields are already being used for septic system and reaching fields. So, there already, there's a history of those fields being used that, um, that it's a continued-
We did look into the article-
It's not a change of use, right?
We did look into the, uh, Article ninety seven, and, um, and to talk a little bit more about that, but if we have a lot of case studies that, um, show that, you know, we would be able to keep, be able to put that use and not change, to change the maintenance of it.
Could it depend, you want to walk through with the warrant?
Article ninety seven.
Yeah. We want the whole, we want to hear about the whole warrant article, that's what we're interested in.
Okay, good. All right, so, um, so, unlike some other land use areas, this is not a particular, a particular expertise of mine, so I'm a little bit on an aloneing curve. I have familiarity with TIPS. I've been digging into the regulations and the statutes. Um, TIP is used for lots of different kinds of projects, um, and the regulatory basis is a little different on each, and the process is a little bit different on each. So, um, this is a little bit of a work in process. Um, the, the draft agreement is not even a complete draft, but we wanted to show you kind of how we were going and how it would be structured, so you've had some idea. The warrant article itself, um, is fairly straightforward, and it would be expected that we would have a full draft of the TIP agreement before we got to town meeting. Um, the article itself is really a recitation of the appropriate regulatory authority that allows the town to enter into this kind of agreement. Um, I think my draft actually has more statutory reference than necessary, which is my effort to try to really zoom in on which is the right, um, section for Sherburne, because a lot of TIPS, um, are in more urban areas. The original focus was on, uh, what was called economic target areas, where we were looking at, um, you know, pitless developed areas that was, you know, underutilized buildings, or places that you had, um, lower incomes, that you're trying to bring in jobs and things like that. That's not what we're doing here. Um, so, that brought me to, um, rather than, um, Mass General Law's chapter forty, section fifty-nine, which talks a lot about TIP, um, but rather to chapter, uh, twenty-three A and section three E. Um, and my, my intent actually is to try to do a better kind of bullet summary for all of you and get it circulated around, so that it's much easier to, to understand. But I haven't quite gotten there yet, or, you know, there are probably weeks before I can get that out. But that section, um, allows two things, and I think one is actually the most, the most simple. It does allow certification of a project that could do some of these things, and then allow in conjunction, handholding, the TIP agreement. Um, it appears, actually, we can skip that entirely, if Sherburne wants to, um, and the group that's involved here is the Economic Assistance Coordinating Council. They serve as sort of state level technical assistance and approval. So, they're going to be sort of the state regulatory body that's overseeing this, to make sure what we're doing is something that should be, you know, is appropriate to be done through this mechanism. Um, so, that's the group that will do the approval of the agreement. Um, what I'm finding to be the simplest, um, way to accomplish this is actually, you know, together we work something up, and the town petitions the EACC for approval of the TIP agreement. And then you're off and running. Um-
And all TIPS have to be approved by town meeting, correct?
It does have to be approved by town meeting. However, um, the town meeting, when we're talking about warrant articles, because that's what you need to do first, and you talked earlier about placers. Um, we can get that placer together very easily in a slightly modified version of, uh, I didn't see what I drafted, okay, of what I had drafted yesterday. Um, so, that's simply having, um, the voters authorize the selectmen to approve the TIP, and then the EACC comes into business also. So, so, the, the town voters are going to
Um, so, uh, the PUD allows, um, uh, some of the commercial wells and the public, um, uh, the location. It's, it's living, I think, um, there's a location, yeah.
We, we did look into, um, we did look into, uh, a lot of case studies to see if, um, uh, a essentially-
Yeah. Yeah, we've looked through regulations and I haven't found anything. Um, and then in terms of the, the other uses in the project, we do have a couple of zones, but the, the PUD, I've forgotten the percentage, but it's, it's a certain percentage of the land must be zoned in the commercial or the business zone.
Twenty-five percent.
To, twenty-five percent. So I, we, we kinda looked at our numbers that way to see if we could satisfy that with the present layout, and I think we can.
Excuse, uh, this demonstrate my ignorance, why is the state agency even involved in this? What is, what's the input of the Economic Assistance Coordinating Council? Why are they even involved with, with the municipal tax agreement?
Yeah, I almost got myself more confused reading all of this from the more I read. Um, their main focus does not appear to be what you want to do. You know, their, I think their greater expansive time is, is dedicated probably to, um, towns in, uh, less fortunate situations, in, you know, communities that are really looking for major economic development to clean up blight and things like that. However-
I thought the jobs creation was in- it's, it's recent, you Redford for a reason.
The, um, actually, I'll just call you, it's right under, it's in, um, the, the regulations, uh, four oh two CMR two. In two point oh three, it's the Economic Assistance Coordinating Council, and Item B says, "They review and approve tax increment financing agreements and special tax assessments proposed by municipalities under Section three E or of Chapter twenty-three A, um, as well as, uh, Section fifty-nine of Chapter forty-eight." Now, fifty-nine and forty-A is the one that's economic target areas and all of those things that are sort of a much more significant level. Um, and actually, they review it, I, I'm pretty sure they have to approve it, but, um, I would guess, kind of like DHCD gets involved in affordable housing, that they're providing a, a review and a comment and a consistency with regulations.
If it's a TIP to bring Amazon to your town or GE to create jobs, I don't understand the input, I don't understand-
Unfortunately, they, I don't think they really care that much on this level project, but the regulations don't have a threshold.
I guess there is in Framingham, there's, uh, seventy-five Concord Street, which, uh, brought in kind of high, it's bringing in, you know, kind of high-end apartments right in downtown, so kind of meets the light thing they're talking about there. Another one's done for Jack's Abbey's, which clearly brought a good stakeholder also into downtown Framingham, and, uh, has been an asset. So it's kind of in both directions there. One with more housing and one with just job and basic businesses they like, you know.
Have you seen it used for infrastru- Have you seen it used for infrastructure before, or just for more development project, more for development project?
I, I was just gonna make a quick note that, um, I think our approach here would be to contact the agency really, you know, early on. Um, I've done that with other types of projects, but same kind of process. And, um, you know, you give them a call to tell them what you're doing, you get their input by phone, you send them a draft copy for review, and then when it's, it's at the point where they need to review and approve, it's just, you know, a, a week to return, uh, you know, any comments on the final.
You can do it for mitigation, you can do it for infrastructure mitigation.
It's almost two separate things, you know what I mean? There's one, the mitigation, and then two, the TIP here, which is kind of almost coincidentally-
Mike, what was your question?
I wasn't a question, I was commenting to Eric. It's, it's a infrastructure use. You can use TIP on infrastructure, if I understand it.
Yeah, you probably can. I still see it as two separate things. I see it as mitigation and a TIP. Anyways, it's more semantics than anything else.
Good. Um, did you have a presentation update that-
Very minor, changed everything.
Okay, I guess John has.
The thing I just mentioned was the, 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 the idea for the building. I mean, hard language, and you do set the maximum five hundred square feet. So, I think that's a, that it makes it there.
Yeah, that's, that's the issue that we're having.
Right, I, a couple thoughts. I could be really creative and say, uh, you know, here you have some stores that have a bogus area, the, the, you know, retail area, we could divide up. But I think the, the real goal was to do the permitting with twenty-five hundred square foot blocks, to bring the market in, and then we would have to come back to town meeting to ask that to be, you know, five thousand or eight thousand or whatever the number is to, to, to satisfy the market.
Assuming the market is one of the critical elements that we want, um, you know.
It's not entirely infusible to go ahead and try to make that zone change, it's really, I reviewed the whole thing the very, when I first came on board to the project, and I had, you know, I, I reviewed line by line and had a few, even just cleanup items that had nothing to do with this project that might help. But, um, other than that, it was, I think that, that retail size was still the only thing that was inconsistent with what our ultimate plan was.
So the, so the market would be the only zoning change you would, you would need?
Yes.
Because of the fact of it.
Okay.
So a lot of details that affect the town, part of the things we worked out that time, with several minor zoning changes that are especially, in the fourth line, one row and things like that, probably best dealt with, uh, formal district, the color, the area was something, um, taken care of, and probably some initially stricken on the capacity of, of the water supply because we had to include in what that's gonna generate, there might be a river, um, like they're gonna draw. So a lot of little details like that, that have to be part of the core of the thing.
Yep, that's why the district thing was one that I had a question on. I think we'd have to clearly set up where the water and sewer, where the water and sewer districts could be. I think we'd have to clear delineation. And- Right, exactly. It may not be exactly the same, but you'd obviously wanna be able to include the town campus buildings and the school, that kind of thing, in case, uh, you know, the advantage of having something like this in town is, like, like, it's evident with the school's septic system is old, if that failed, or the school's well may not be that great, you could then hook it up to the system as a, uh, the municipal box. We have the same, we have the issue with town hall this year, I mean, that kind of thing. Something we wanna make sure that if we're building an infrastructure like this, we have that availability for town resources. Because I know, Sean, you've said how much money we spend on water and sewer issues every year in our buildings.
And there's definitely many details, I think, really have to hammer it out, probably next month and a half, I think, to at least satisfy town meeting, it's been thought out, and my own questions in many ways. I don't know how much on the municipal side has to be sorted out before this, like a district. We actually have a proposed district, we did that part of our smart schooling study, and, um, you know, we certainly have done a fair amount of studies in there. Like, I don't know how much details on the municipal side has to be sorted out to support this. That can be sorted, I think, after the fact, because it's, um, um, one, it's been done quite a bit, and two, it's kind of independent of what they're doing here. Do you know what I'm trying to say on that there? It is a bit independent. The one thing I wanted to ask is, for David, um, do you know, do we still have an active contract with Bristol? I'd like to kind of maybe get someone on just for a short monit- sooner rather than later, just to start going over some of the technical side of this.
I haven't seen anything from them lately, I think. Oh, okay.
I mean, so we can, we can ha- can we have money in it? I'd like to start engaging them on some of the details of this sooner rather than later. Just see if there's anything that kills it. What we're seeing here is just in concept, is it the concept of them building this with some, um, tax relief? But, um, I think for the next month and a half, we have to know if anything is really, uh, critical barriers.
Yeah, Eric, Eric, I disagree with you that it's, that it's completely independent. I, I think the policy justification for the, um, septic field, the wastewater treatment plant and, and the water, the old water supply is the district, it is, it is the rest of the downtown and the other properties. And, and I also think there's a lot of moving parts here. So, um, you know, the idea of a TIP article is great, but I really don't think, I, I just, just as advice, I don't think the town is gonna support something when they only get pieces of it. It's just born out of experience, so you, you've gotta think about moving all the, you know, pieces on the board forward or whatever metaphor you wanna use at the same time. Not, not, I, this, this is the kind of, you know, cool, interesting, novel piece of it that, uh, you know, it gives something financial potentially, um, a- a- and, and creates something, but the whole project is important and, and, uh, and something the town's gotta see the whole piece of.
I couldn't agree with you more. I mean, tell me if you want, if you want the, uh-
Well, tell me if he definitely wants details, no question about that. Whether the district has to mesh up with that, we can discuss. But I know, like, the first thing they said, that they didn't wanna re- attach a proposed development to it, that would, that would kill the article right away. I mean, there's no question with that. No one's gonna pass that.
Suzie, can you please identify where you live? Roger Demmer, who didn't, lives on a very high number on Maple Street. Suzie.
Um, I think we need to really take a step back, because I think that we haven't even established that people, um, in town feel that it's appropriate to take public land, which is a public resource, and use, essentially give it to a private developer, um, to increase their profit and increase their profitability of the land that they do own. Um, I will share with you a, a small conversation in the post office this morning with someone who has lived in town longer than I have, and I have lived here a very long time. And she said something about, uh, there was, um, there was some meeting having to do with this development coming up, and I could get it tonight, and she said, "Well, what's it all about?" And I explained what I thought I knew, which was whether to put, I didn't realize that this was totally financing, and so I explained it in a term that I just raised with you, whether it is, um, appropriate to take town-owned land for this particular use. And she said, "Oh, the town fathers would never reconsider that."
One thing to point out, the use of the ball fields would still be ball fields. It would be underneath the, uh, they would be using it-
I think people wanna say, I think that-
Right, I just, I just, okay, we're not giving the land, they're, they're not asking anybody to give land, it's the use of, use on the land?
I think, um, I just get in the, I'm concerned, however, what we're doing, we're creating a mechanism to essentially pursue treatment plans, which is going to be the town, because it's a company of three, taking it for a construction program.
That, that doesn't change the difficulty that I think people have with the concept, which is, do we, you know, finance, promote, et cetera? Anybody who comes to us with, uh, development that they can't put on the land that they own in the same way that we all have to put anything that we put up on land that we own? There are standards for everyone else to, in any way, or up to anyone else. What, why is this?
I think the town's gonna take it over. It's gonna be telling of this, right?
Um, Frank, I was just asking, my question was, I understand you'd evolve here in a kind of good situation and building and so forth. Um, so providing town land for that, and then basically, it also seems to a point, so in the end, you're gonna have an exposure that they wish you would have paid nothing, because through the deduction we have, that will pay you the tip. I'm not, you know, I wasn't really aware of this thing, that means that basically we have no financial outlay. I know initially you have to owe much, but eventually you get all your money back, and in, you have this nice system through town land, is this plant which the town had paid for, which is kept, and fifteen hours, and she'd go the other way towards the town, you know, for it.
But there's a major parameter is that we would pay, take this thing just like any, anyone else in town along Main Street.
See, is it, yeah.
So the town is getting revenue from Suits Treatment-
Just like the MWA?
Yes, exactly.
Robert?
Uh-
Address?
Robert Johnson, two seven two, Western Avenue. Uh, I'd like to make a couple of assumptions here and, and a statement, and see if this is correct or not. And, uh, my first assumption is that, uh, something gets built and the town doesn't use it at all. You know, not saying that it can't, but that for various reasons, no entities enter into it, so that at one point, um, it has one user. Okay, so, under this scenario, um, eleven years from now, uh, there would be a septic system and a well system that the town has paid for and that benefits, um, one firm outfit, whatever owner, one owner. And that, uh, the town then owns that system, but all the expenses for that system, any maintenance, any repair, any use, uh, you know, you hire an engineer to, um, make sure the system's working properly, all of those costs would be paid by the property owner? Is, is that correct?
And that's why I mentioned at the beginning of this, that I wouldn't, I wouldn't support the town taking any ownership until new flows are into it, or new withdrawals from the well. If it's just for this property, then this part, then this owner operates property will operate these systems for however long it takes, until the town connects to it. At least that's what I would take to support it. You know, and, and that is a detail that definitely has to be worked out, that's obviously true. Basically, you don't build a, uh, collection system in pieces, you kind of build it at once. And, uh, one of the points which I know I'd need to support in town meeting is either on the conceptual district we have or whatever, you need the support of the people that'd be in that district. Because they will, they will have some financial obligation, they'll likely do betterments to actually do the connections to that. It'll be a small betterment, because essentially, you know, the developer funded all the upfront costs to it. As far as like the revenue, say, we're paying for it, I guess the, the dual edged sword here is that if they don't build it, they, they put in a smaller development. Maybe they don't get a retail store, maybe it's a few units or whatever, but also has less tax revenue. By doing this, after ten years, you are getting more tax revenue than you get without the well and wastewater system. Because they're essentially putting in, um, essentially more, more retail, you're putting in more units for the assisted living. If they do everything on site, they're gonna have a smaller, smaller and less assessed value of a finished product. Does that make sense?
One, one concept just to keep in mind, too, I think I mentioned before, but that right now's a unique opportunity for the town that we've talked for years and years about putting infrastructure in the downtown for wastewater and for public water, that we would have to pay for upfront all ourselves. Right now, we have a developer coming to us saying, "Let us build this and pay it off over time." Therefore, we're not gonna have that initial millions of dollars of expense that we've been talking about spending for years, we haven't done it. But it's just something for people to, to think about, that this is a one, probably a one, you know, opportunity for, that somebody's talking to us about paying for it. Upfront, which we will pay back, I understand that, but we've, we've reduced revenue that we weren't, that we're not seeing now. We're not seeing that revenue now, so it's not like we're taking any revenue away, it's that we're just not gonna collect it for a few more years.
And there's been concern for a number of years about the septic field downtown, and it's been a concern for a good long while. In addition to the insurance policy for, for Pine Hill, that's, how many meetings have we had about the well issues here at town, on town campus? I know the, the school, uh, I, I mean, just as an example, my daughter came home and told me how terrible the water was tasting at the school a few weeks ago, and they had to look into it. I know Sean went up there to test it, but it's, it's something to be concerned about, that we don't have a backup system in, in town. Marion's had her hand up for a while. Who are you?
Uh, we know that this land is, you know, we're going to go back to the, uh, the planning or the public. We know it's, uh, that they're going to be in a, uh, but I'm wondering whether, uh, and we're just living for, you know, a certain size, and it is, or, and or house in a, for a certain size, would be necessary for the kids to work, or the developers, or the town? I'm not so sure.
Yeah, that's the, that was, it's that, one of the premises of my question about some minimum size to make this, to make this work.
An idea of like, I mean, we get good to have an idea of a minimum size to make it possible. So that then we can look at plans and start to do that.
I think, like you said, I think for any of us to support it, we'd have to have some commitment on that direction there.
Yes, sir. Can you speak up a little, I'm sorry?
But I, it turns to me, we're putting the parts labeled for the parts in several ways. We would potentially be having a warrant part along, on the agenda for spring needed, to approve a financing vehicle for an infrastructure equipment that's on yet, that we don't have the budget for, for a project instead of having to buy one, you know, a project, uh, in, with any pre-tax category.
Well, I think that's the point that Mike and I were both making, which is, what's the end goal? We understand that in terms of the water in the sewage, but what's the project? I mean, need those details, because I, I just, my experience, Tommy doesn't like voting on things unless they have something to do with the hell it is.
And then my second question is, I've seen, I've seen many of your presentations, and it seems a lot about, um, conceptually the way it's going to be. But is the first argument a lot, you know, broadly, you know, part of a lot of, uh, is there, is there even a preliminary defined for that?
Um, no, it's, it's always been a street, um, that's sort of been the need, but we've listened, and it sounds like the water is actually just as important, it's not more important for the town to have. Um, so in, you, you, it seems like it's for matters of efficiency, you want to be both at the same time.
But you have to combine the four, you think about public and-
Yes, but, so, and this is why we're laying out a conceptual framework here, because we can't spend the resources to do engineered drawings, all of the information that's required, because we have to get a sense that this is something the town wants.
We would- Sort of a chicken and egg problem, neither, because how do you know what the county will do? We don't have infrastructures to think about and what to design. And in all due respect, I think developers, we expect someone to prolong their projects, to point where the town can, see what they're getting, to do what they're putting.
Roger.
Um, the town hasn't invested in, looking at the, oh, the water supply, and I think you want to handle downtown, and, you know, just, just say, I call it, make some, you know, grow, or, you know, just, all the stuff they have, or, okay.
... There's no other ordinary subject that is seen as a living well. Most of them look like septic wells or downriver. We're in the process of working on what some of these might be, like two or three, but now they're not.
I just wondered, I guess, um, you know, hearing something off of what you said about the water supply, because of how, where is the water going to come from? I'm kind of aligned with the end of the page here, um, about the pot is filling well, that more pot than far pong, and it's even a little back in the old school. But water, we have to keep our community facilities brought to...
This is far pong, this is a specialty. I saw the term, I saw the far pong piece of the...
What is the problem? Where is the water?
Except for we have, I think, there's some relocations that were investigated, um, and with the help of Roger and also Sean, um, to locate those, those places where we might be able to get the most heat. Um, and, uh, and also where, um, digging that pipe, the pipe going back to town center, would be the most cost effective. So we have relocations here looked at, the other Sean, and we're asking, so you don't...
No, we've got, um, the next step would be just work with Roger, would be to make this town's already, and Sean, make this, uh, what's the best...
I can say the only one that's been studied is actually Moore's Road. That actually has gone through a few pump tests, actually has been studied, is deemed to have, uh, good capacity. The other ones would have to be studied, which are, I think, prolong the project and wouldn't be, um, this is my opinion and what I know about it, realistic at this point. That is my opinion.
Look, I mean, it's misheard, but I thought that Moore's Pond had really good capacity. I know what sort of...
Yeah, it's an overburdened well.
Moore's Pond, although we'd like to tap into that.
Yeah, don't, how much, come, me, what's the matter?
You gotta remember one thing, when we did this dad lock meeting years ago, that we give Moore's Road, and that's an afterbirth, which makes sense. One of the big things that people are talking about, four, ten years now, there's not one well downtown applying to deepwater. If something happens, something catastrophic happens, and this gives us an opportunity for someone else to sit the bill. And that was the whole reason why I slammed years ago, like, no one in the town wanted a payboy, and we have someone now that wants a payboy. To me, we should really have an open eye, we should really think about this a lot, even then, what's it gonna affect just certain people, and they don't want development downtown and stuff? All it does is increase the value of the property downtown, that's your tax revenue. It's a whole eye-opener here. I don't know what else to say. Boy, oh, boy, this is a great opportunity.
Sure.
Do you think the Moore's Road would look like the next one, spot, and ruin it yet? Got the white tile, store all and stuff, the white, yep. To, uh, that lock, if anybody, we have the new, that's the, 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 or, plan out with the capacity, because that will determine how many people it could put up for water.
I don't know who's gonna swim, sorry over here.
Uh, Charlie, stop there. And, uh, I've heard that mentioning a tax, a couple times, clearly, you must have some estimates of what you think projects like this are generating taxes coming to town.
Yes, so the, um, and then you just focus in on the assisted living, because that would be part of the tech structure, and so a, carrying to other towns and other assisted living facilities, uh, somewhere in the, in the range of a fifteen million dollar valuation, uh, you'd be able to pull, uh, above three hundred thousand dollars of tax revenue. Um, and that's sort of the formula we need when we start streaming charge, right, over eleven year period, ten year period, um, downtown.
Three hundred thousand, nine, two...
For the assisted living, yeah, for the assisted living.
And that, after, have I tried fully following Jeff, whether that after the fire station begins, or is that...
Yeah, it, it would generate, it would generate, say, three hundred thousand, just very ballpark numbers here, it would generate three hundred thousand dollars annually revenue, and then, okay, you put two hundred fifty thousand dollars, a hundred fifty thousand dollars, and go forward, the payment of...
For, for the first year, and then what it does...
Yeah.
Right, and it tapers. Charlie, what it does is it, like, that first year, the full three hundred goes towards it, and then it scales down over time. So, as, over the years, the town starts receiving more revenue each year. For the first year, you're not gonna, we're not gonna get much additional revenue, because it's all gonna go to pay down that, well, not the full...
Well, I gotta construct, I'm gonna do that.
So, it's, it's a scaled model where we build up our revenue, rather than getting that three hundred in the first year, in lieu of that, we've got this infrastructure.
Right, just to say that if it's, it's helping fifty grand, right, that town gets fifty grand per decade while the rest is paying off the debt, for you to pay for me.
And it tapers, I can't say that, so it's not the full three hundred. What, what are you paying taxes right now on the property? Thirty?
Forty.
Forty. So year one would be forty. You know, year one would be forty, yeah, and I don't, year one. You never lose money, you never do, and it tapers up, and the next year might be sixty and seventy, whatever it is, and tapers up to three hundred over thirty.
And the, the test that they're talking about is just for the assisted living portion, so, with, with the commercial, with the commercial piece, you'd have additional revenue from that as well. Well, not, I mean, if it's, if, if it's a, if the town approves a five thousand square foot market, I mean, that does have significant talent, I mean, more than what, if there're, I mean, it's, the property, twelve acre property right now is generating, what did you say, forty thousand, yeah, thirty or forty thousand of revenue, which would be a significant increase of revenue, with this, one thing to consider, as an assisted living and retail, it doesn't add any additional kids to the school.
If you ask me, it's like a scale...
Oh, yeah. I've, I've been asking for that. Absol- absolutely. Yeah, I wanna see those detailed numbers, and I told them, yeah.
Matt, Matt, the Kellywood Street also, uh...
Sorry, couldn't hear you.
Matt, the Kellywood Street also brought us help, so George, to go back to your point, you would use, uh, my health sampling.
Mm-hmm.
It satisfied their requirements for public water supply, which would be the same standard that this water supply would be held to, would not be tripping standards, this wouldn't have to either. Um, I think in terms of the other question, um, can I wear my other hat, my clinical ID to the hospital, uh, in Boston, and the specificity of what exactly we're talking about for who lives there, such as a nursing home and a pre-assisted living, I would imagine the infrastructure costs of those two populations may be dramatically different in terms of the gamma response, other pieces of the, um, the frequency with which they know who they're called. So I think being specific about what kind of, what we've got, there is a question also, I'd be imagining that maybe the other housing may have any help.
Absolutely, yeah, definitely.
Yeah, really, the people can learn that sometimes.
Excuse me.
I have a question about the well test that I think you have, um, applied for on up on the land, on the land, not on the six acres of the other land that you own, um, behind the, has that well, I know that you got approval for the well testing, have that tested and done?
No.
Thank you. We don't really know what the capacity of the...
Yeah, was, um, one more question. Yeah, yes, sir.
About the twenty-four North Main Street. I mean, I understand that the, the wells are subject to fragile, uh, fifty two years to be subject, and I have to go in the front yard to, to these sorts of things, but the insurance is a central town, you, you get to have a, you get to have a well. You know, I own a, I own acres, so my family of four doesn't really impact that very much. But, you know, the idea of putting, you know, a hundred and twenty beds, the additional land that gives condos all the way up the hill, as well as all the retail and everything like that, I mean, I know you had proposed before that it was gonna be seven town usage, uh, third floor usage, but now we're talking about, well, if nobody uses it, you know, until somebody does, I mean, I just not can. I mean, everyone today in town in the center has their subjects, who's invested in their subject, has their wells, you know, while there may be, maybe some issues with having gotten them right today, it just seems to me that the developers are still lying and sharing user of them. So, it does feel to me that we're giving our ball field away for the profit of the developers. We're talking about leaving hundreds of people under one piece of land.
Ball field is in the way.
But I think, we hear, uh, Matt, the Kellywood Street, uh, also, Shiver, and my colleague say, we hear about the benefit, hosting a lot of Sunday, and that being the aspect about, I just, that the idea that we're fine now, the variances that come up on Main Street are, we think, because it's very hard to become fine system, and the, the basic idea is your system of sales, what we're putting in is better in sales, and it may not be as good as the system's being, always, and they think we just have to not encourage those people. I mean, for the development question to sound, like the idea that we're okay now for downtown, we have to be variances, because we can't conduct people home, but it doesn't mean that...
Have you, have you, I wanna say something?
The properties of the property, essentially, now being in the district, now have to pay for their water, pay for their sewer. Now, it wasn't something I signed up for when I moved to the town, I had the only stuff there for New York.
Only, only when you actually hook up though.
Right, I understand, but when you fail, you're forced to, usually, that's the way it works. So now, anybody in the town center has to be ready to pay for their water and pay for their sewer.
I, I just wanna, I wanna say...
I own acres, enough moves forward to have my...
Except you had to put a mounted system in the front yard, you said.
Yeah.
So that means you didn't meet the standards, you, you got waivers to do that, so you didn't meet the standards, you were allowed to do it despite not meeting the standards, the reason you were allowed to do it was so you could continue living there, probably cost you a lot of money to do it, too. If this system had been in place, where you went in for your approval, you probably would have jumped at the chance to tie in, because you wouldn't have had to go through the whole approval process. I can understand why now that you've done that, you feel like it's a sunk cost, but it's not, it's not really accurate to say that you'd be forcing somebody to, to, uh, join, you could have it that way, but I, I wanna make a larger point, we just, we're talking about an important policy decision for the town, we don't have to come out one way or another, I'm not even sure how I feel about it, I've been talking to these guys for a while, we should at least deal in facts. The ball fields are still gonna be there, that's been said a number of times. If you keep saying we're taking the ball fields away, it's not true. Let's at least, we, we can debate points, let's at least debate points validly. We make tax decisions all the time, there's people in this room who have their taxes subsidized because they keep open space, or they keep forest land. That's a decision that the state made for the town, the town hasn't even been allowed to decide that, but some people pay less taxes than others, that's fine, that's how we have some open space. You're not prevented from selling the open space, you can still opt out and pay some of the taxes back and sell it. There's all kinds of tax decisions like that, so this is just another one, it's a policy decision for the town, it's not a handout, it's not somebody looking for something they're not entitled to get, we get to decide if it happens, but we should decide it based on accurate facts.
Gentlemen in white shirt.
Andrew, so there are three elements here, uh, is there a lot of sales pitches based on the ability of people in the district to eventually be able to connect to that? What guarantee is that? Because when we had that big group meeting a month ago, it was told that a certain amount would be built to handle this development, and if future needs were found, such as the school or town building, it could be expanded. So, we, we were being told if a subject fails or the school needs to be maxed, is this project actually bettering those goals, or are we then taking a new finance project to expand?
I understand.
And I, as a homeowner, do I get to then act for sure? Who has a right to it? It's being told that they get thirty percent, and they have this immediate right, but do I have an equal right? Can I just jump into it, or am I gonna be blocked out because they reserve their thirty?
Can I contest that? Um, whether it needs to be expanded to take town flows or not, is definitely a detail that needs to be worked out. I support that they actually build it full bore, so all that the town needs to construct is a collection system. Town needs, essentially, needs to have pipes in the road that go to the houses, and that it's actually brought to full capacity. A water system can't be expanded, it's gonna be made to whatever the wa, whatever the well sup, supplies, which is about, which is about what we, uh, sketched out as a district, actually, so it actually works out pretty good right there. I think it's fifty thousand gallons per day is what the Moore's Road well can do. Um, so, yeah, right, that's a detail, that definitely needs to be worked out, and, uh, and I guess, from Mike's point, I'm gonna correct what I said before, also, at least for me to support this, I think the town supported, I'll have to get buy-in from people who would be members of this district, there's no question about it, you can't force a district down, someone who doesn't want it. And it actually, we have to actually, we have a sketch of the district, and I think we need to do some kind of mailing, or some kind of survey, maybe Ed can even help with that, and to find out how much support there is from the district, 'cause if the, if the members of the district don't want water and sewer, that really is probably the critical thing, more important than the town itself.
The town is the biggest member of the district, right?
Yeah.
I know. I mean, it, it, it's not, it's not just, I, I, I don't, I disagree with, we're just gonna count heads on North Main Street, I mean, I think we've gotta take a lot of factors into consideration, and it's a big financial risk for the town to not have reliable water, and we've gotta, we've gotta weigh that as well.
That's a good point taken, but...
We're doing a little bit, Roger.
When you do betterments, it's ultimately, the district is gonna pay for the expansion of it. Yeah, I agree with you with the value and so on like that, but it's hard to tell someone, like, uh, like a betterment might be five thousand dollars.
I agree.
Yeah, and I think, uh, without the buy-in of, of those, you know, or there was some kind of consensus of people within that, it's gonna be a hard sell, I don't think a town can shove water sewer down the district's throat.
I bet a lot of people would go in if they needed to...
Yep.
And could defer until then.
Oh, like, more than...
And that's, and that's part, I mean...
Rather than spending fifty thousand on the septic system or...
Yeah, and, and I don't know what the, I don't know what the rule is, I mean, I know you, you could make people tie in, or if there was a district, but I don't know that you have to make people tie in, and that's something else to think about.
Well, you can actually make them pay the betterment for their tie-in or not, that's the, the...
Well, you could, or you, or you don't need to, I mean, it's, it, I think you can do it different ways.
Definitely, many, many ways to do it.
When I say support of the idea of saying, we're gonna approve a non-compliant system if you can tie into a septic, it's hard to imagine saying, we'll give you a variance for a three foot mound in the front yard or by a, so I think, if, if you say I'm going down that road, I think you are going to say, all of these systems will end up going into that.
Next time they come to see you.
Next time the property gets older, next thirty, I mean, the five or something.
Which, which, as, like I said before, I think they'd be happy about that, because it's gonna be a lot less expensive to tie into a sewer system than, than build a whole new septic system.
I think that if you should say, just think it's supportive, it'd be hard to imagine approving a non-compliant variance when there is a suitable alternative to it, particularly with that. So, so I think that, is there any way, or against the project, just to say, I think that would be the implication, it'd be hard to imagine a board approving that variance when there's a good alternative.
Yeah, I didn't wanna finish the one I was saying before, is that, when I was on the downtown, uh, water supply committee with, uh, Roger there, it was interesting, they actually did a survey of, of, more just downtown people, not officially in a district, and whether they wanted, um, wastewater or not, and just correlated on how recently they up, they updated their septic system, those that recently did it said no, and those that didn't said yes.
Let's write this up in about five minutes, um...
I just wanted to reply to Michael, Chris, about Robert's monstrosity, this is shallow, but, but I do think that tonight, apart from the board of health, and what I think strikes me is, I think you as a selectman, you need to, there's a couple on, on yourselves, and I, and there's a lot of sort of peripheral conversations that lead to big crowds meeting with this, because they're uncertain, you know, from the post office, the ones being discussed, who's discussing it, who has what opinion based on their own expertise and direction to take. And my frustration, not just with you and Glenn, or well, John, Chris, you know, I think it's long past time that you all sort of coalesce around a strong, fact-based attitude as to what you wanna do with it. It can be, it seems to be a drift, you're for it, but help us understand it by articulating the benefits. And don't hide from the detriment, but I think it makes the benefits. Because people are opposed, and people want to show up, and not so much opposed often times, they're confused and therefore frightened, but I think it's time for you all to coalesce around the fact that what do you believe? It'll make it out right to people.
Robert Johnson, two seven two, West Manhattan. Let's say that I own a house within this to be created district, and, um, my septic system fails, what is going to be the cost to me to connect up to the water and your sewage of this system? Am I gonna have to put a pipe underground from the septic system to my house? Am I gonna have to put in a pipe underground from the well to my house?
From the well to your house.
It's gonna cost an awful lot more than an alternative septic system.
Absolutely. I mean, the, the betterment would be a very small one, a world of betterments, 'cause at least it's my belief that, you know, they would build a full system, and the betterment essentially be the pipes under the street. Now, how is, what each individual owner has to build, you potentially essentially stub out a service connection to the, to the property line, so you have to put a pipe in the street, a collection pipe, a pipe then to the service line, so all they have to do is connect to the edge of their property, so whatever that is, anywhere from thirty feet to whatever.
I hadn't gathered prior to this, that the piping from the district, or from the septic system and the well would all be put in as part of the project.
Not part of this, this will do the system, and, and system, I believe, should be sized appropriate for downtown, and then at some point, if the town moves forward, the district moves forward, with either distribution or collection system, or both, then, they do the betterments, and they would actually do the entire, they'd do, they'd put the pipes under the street, essentially, at that point, there'd essentially be a phase two, but the town is inside, it wants to move forward with it.
We should talk more. Oh, excuse me, let's write this...
Just one more comment, I've never, it was a labidon, maybe somebody else can fill, fill me in here, Bob Zimmerman, Zimmerman was, uh, he was a, a study on wastewater treatment plant in town, and, uh, to give, to give a note, as I recall, um, speak to the fact that you need a certain number of users to operate a plant like that, so you have to think about, not gradual, you have to think about quantity, when, if, if he was correct, and if my reading of his results was correct, and somebody can add, or, you know, whatever, to my recollection, but he said, he concluded that in fact, a town's system would help work, because it would not produce the minimum quantity that was required to run a municipal grid.
Yeah, 'cause I managed that, that study, I remember that. It's actually not what the results said. The results said the flows would be insufficient for methane generation to actually do a, um, uh, methane, um, energy plant, so we're actually just short of those flows, and it didn't include this development. I don't think that's proposed here, as to do methane generation. It actually still encouraged the use of a septic system in the downtown, if you could report, it said it was technically feasible, you just size it appropriately, I think it was like, it was under thirty thousand gallons per day, I think it was, meaning more than that for the methane generation, I believe, yeah.
Yeah, that's what it was, he was talking, he was talking about forcing people to pump their stuff and bring it, bring it to the treatment plant to get the quality back, yeah.
It was called the smart sewer study, done by, uh, they said, uh, Charles River Water Association, back when Bob was the chair.
The, uh, I'm sure this is gonna be on the agenda or discussed at both the January seventeenth and January thirty-first, uh, meeting, whether or not to, certainly discuss the placeholder of the warrant, so, um...
I, I would say, I would say to, to your, your comment earlier, we should all probably come back with a list of points that we wanna, we wanna discuss, or that we think are important for the town, and, and concerns we have about the project too, and, and make sure that we convey that, uh, to the project team, so that they have the ability to answer them and address them, and it will help the public. I thought that was an excellent suggestion, it'll help the public evaluate it, and we can deal in facts.
Yeah, I mean, this, we've had several discussions already, and this is a very different proposal than what the initial concept, so I don't, I don't think anyone up here has made up their mind, so...
Well, it couldn't be a mind-made-up thing, it would be a, uh, a fact, what factors of the...
Yeah, what are the details that we need to see in order to...
It's your idea, of course, it's your...
I, I suspect this is gonna be a lot like the, um, Maple Street, the Pulte project on Maple Street, with the funny word ad, hearing, after hearing, after hearing, after Jonathan, there, file, uh, um, yeah, this is a really good discussion, thank you very much, uh, let's move on to the, uh, town administrator report.
We had the item that, uh, you wanted added about police detail...
I'm sorry?
You added the item on the agenda about the consideration of police detail...
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, thank you.
Um, I can...
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to, uh, we've talked, if the, this is an agenda item that I added, we keep talking about police details at the community center, my understanding is there was a discussion a while ago about it, that it was never adopted, I'd like to, I frankly, uh, like to deal with it a little more efficiently, so I, what I'm going to suggest is that, uh, we have a recommenda, a, a recommendation on what the policy is, um...
Did you, did you write this, or was this...
No, this is...
That was from two thousand fourteen.
This is, this is, uh, you'll notice that my name is not on the...
Yeah, but that was a bad one, look at the chairs, look at the chairs.
Exactly. I think Mr. Giamo is the one who has to answer for this one, um, and I think we need to finalize this, 'cause I just, I'm tired of the amount of time that we're spending dealing with that issue every time a, uh, community center proposal comes in.
Yeah, I would recommend, um, taking this, starting from this, and bring the comments back, maybe on the seventeenth, or...
Or, or they emailed me the amendments, or... And I think this was one thing, I think Paul has, Paul's the one who brings it up at every, at every meeting, so you could let him know that we're gonna have a detailed discussion about this the next time he can...
Yep.
Comment on it and be ready.
I'll, I'll send him an email tonight.
Honestly, this isn't as big a deal as, as they look like, because I think they're doing pretty much all of this, and the conclusion it comes out with is it's up to the selectmen to take recommendations and then decide if they wanna to require...
I believe that's why we didn't pass it at the time, because we were saying...
That's exactly what we didn't have, that we were only gonna do it now.
Oh, but you didn't need it.
Yeah, I, I think that's what was going on, it, it was at a time where there was a lot of, um, tension over this issue, uh, as I, as I recall, and this was a way to kind of, David did a good job of laying out what the process should be, and we tweak, we tweak what we were doing a little bit, but it, it essentially was this, and it clarified, um, that it was not a veto, either way.
This policy was limited to, uh, serving of alcohol on town-owned property, you want to, you want to broaden it to police details for...
We can, it's only up to the...
I'm not sure we can because of the, uh, contract.
Yeah, is that...
Strictly in the police union contract?
Yeah.
What, what detail constitutes?
Yeah, that's a, that's a term of agreement.
The wording is directly in the contract, and we try, we've been negotiating that.
Um, so I wanted to get a sense of the board, whether or not you agreed, I, I just, I'd like to...
Yeah, let's talk about it at the next meeting.
You know, unlike the word in two thousand fourteen, we're actually gonna finalize something.
But if, if we're, if we're talking about the, the language that's in the contract, it should be done in executive session, if we're talking about, um, mending a policy for what the board can use in order to assess whether to go with the chief's recommendation or not when, when it's made, it's...
I mean, I, I wouldn't even go so far as to say my proposed amendment would be to cross the word draft down. Well, one thing we, one thing that comes up, I think the reason...
What did you do that in two thousand fourteen?
The reason we're discussing this, and the reason... Because even at five selectmen, we heard that guy was... Paul brings this up every meeting when it's a certain, he talks about a certain number, and I don't see any... A hundred, both, both numbers a hundred. Okay. But, so do we need to put that in a policy that we say anything over a hundred, but... Paul's comment has, even if the selectmen had that policy already, but I think the, the thought was, if you have a hundred people at a morning breakfast, you need a police detail, or when you have fifty people drinking in, in the evening, maybe a police detail. It's, it's... Maybe it's not a number. And, and I don't know how you put rules behind it without, and the reason this was done, in part, was because people were going to the community center, and the community center was frustrated that people who went there didn't know what was gonna be required of them, so this was a way to clarify those rules. And, and we had some issues, where people would say, oh, you know, I thought I was gonna be able to have a way in here, and I can't afford the police detail, I had no idea I was gonna need a police detail.
True, we'll, we'll come back the next time that's been... And, and the, uh, January seventeenth meeting, we'll try and finalize it.
We haven't had any official complaints since we've kind of looked at that whole process.
So, so we can, we now apply it.
Okay, thanks, George, uh, uh, David, do you have any TA reports?
No, thanks.
Any selectmen reports? All right, the most new adjourned?
On the number...
Second.
All receiver, and...
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.